Call the chairman of the meeting, Grand Forks City Council, to order. And the first item is the adoption of the agenda. We have A and B additions to late items. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions to the late items? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Korlick, all those in favor. Now, in terms of minutes, we're -- I'm introducing minutes from April 15, special going camera minutes. Special going camera minutes on the 23rd, regular meeting on the 23rd, and the adoption of special going camera for the 30th. I'm asking for a motion to adopt all four of those minutes. Counselor Krogg, and another, seconded, Counselor Thompson. Are there any items you want to break out of that?
No, but I would like to comment, because the special to go in camera minutes are, hey, let's have a meeting the last 30 seconds to say, let's go in camera, so...
There's nothing much left.
Yeah, and three of those are that.
Yeah.
So, streamlining it would be, or it's...
Well, that's where we're at, but if you keep talking, we won't be...
Hey, you don't know what time I bet on this.
Okay, and counsel, I'm asking, are there any items in those minutes that anyone wishes to bring up? Hearing none. All those in favor? Carried. That was quick. But I can see your point, that maybe we should break them out into a different grouping in future, and lead the regular meeting as a separate motion.
Yeah, 'cause the special to go in, if you look at them, there's nothing on them.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I'm not sure why it's even here.
No, but I'll expedite those things in future. Bringing us down to reports from council, and at this point, we have...
We have a request for decision, for reports from council.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have Counselor Moslin is the only written report, but we will ask council for verbal reports. Counselor Moslin.
I think you're worshiping, again, I'm trying to write something that's old already, and I also put a couple points in there anticipating things that I wasn't going to see. For the -- one thing, we talked about it, this evening, this morning, thank you very much, the town hall meeting on social support services. Just once again, want to thank, is it Diane Doring?
Did I get that right?
And from Citizens for a Better Grand Forks, oh, hi, sorry, and of course, Michael Strukoff and the other table guests, panel for being so good, and having that conversation so well, and I want to thank the counselors for helping me fill in on that this morning in the committee of the whole meeting. I guess also, I guess my last paragraph, the business about updates from city hall. I did, so in my report, I tried to point out, yeah, well, every two weeks, there's a council's report. If you want, you know, if you want to ask me about mine, you're welcome to come and ask me about mine. I'll give you more information if you want, but what I'm not going to do is write another glossy summary. I don't know, apparently, other municipalities do that, or have their staff do it. I know that in general, we have lots of...
Yeah, we have the reports from Kevin and the weekly updates.
Yeah, we do, but we don't make that public.
I guess we don't. No, but that keeps us on top of it.
We worship, at the committee of the whole, we always have the highlight reports from all the managers, and so that kind of covers the once-a-month thing, and it's quite, you know, it's getting more detailed and everything, so it is actually a report that comes out that's a public report.
Yes, so that is public to most, Counselor Thompson.
Well, it does, but for somebody that's wanting to research Grand Forks and went onto our website, you know, I don't know, if you just had something in there that was a little eye-popping, you know, important things, issues that would be of interest to somebody wanting to come here.
Counsel, you burn?
Yeah, my suggestion would be to have, like, say, point form streamlined version, either on the website or on Facebook, that's the biggest thing, is get things on Facebook, so to have it buried in an agenda somewhere that kind of isn't accessible to everybody, but you just have it right on Facebook, right on the main website, just that, a nice little image.
Any comment?
Lost, yeah, I don't have.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Anything's possible, right? We're usually, our constraint is time, in our department, and to do all the tasks every time is a challenge. The weekly update is one of those that's working well for in-house communication.
Yes, definitely.
That was not there last year. If council wants, we can look into an option where we do a council update that goes out possibly after meetings, but I've heard from other communities, they can be really time-consuming, and if you use resources that are not in the organization, there's some costs associated with that, right? To make them nice and pretty, and so they're concise with what happened in council's day.
Right.
We can, for a trial, we were just chatting quickly, to highlight maybe a little bit more on Facebook once the agenda gets released, to maybe put a post out, hey, the latest agendas and highlight reports from staff are available.
Okay.
So, that's maybe a first step.
Could we put this as a topic too, when we do strategic planning?
Yes, that's really good.
And already, I'm talking to Diane about when we're going to do that, so she's busy on setting that in motion, but we could put that as a topic.
That's a good idea.
Okay, so, general, that kind of communication.
Yes.
Right. Counselor Moslin, you're still on air?
The other option is just to have somebody from private, from Citizens, do it. I certainly want to help, once again, thank Les Lorraine for their help, in making sure that our public and ourselves are so well-informed. You know, that's my report.
Thank you, Counsel. And Counselor Krogg?
Yeah, like, Les' film, and Lorraine could be taking notes, and...
It's all there.
Okay, further council reports from anyone? Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. Because of the meetings and other obligations I've had in the last, since our last regular meeting, I wasn't able to get it written into our staff in time. So, I have a few things I want to report on. One is that I attended the flood recovery meeting, April 24th, at the River Valley Community Church. As with the mayor, counselor, counselors, Zelinski, Eber, Studeley, Moslin, and myself, attended the AKBLG in Castle Guard, April 26th through 28th, and I'm pleased to report that our four resolutions that we put forward have been passed by the delegate body, and will now go on to the UBCM for consideration at their annual convention in April. So, I attended a workshop sponsored by Community Futures with respect to what the community would be looking for in a community hall, that workshop was held on April 30th. Interesting process. I attended the Women's Institute at the Boundary Annual Convention, May the first. They had asked me to speak, enter great greetings from the city, which I was pleased to do. When I was speaking earlier, one of the things that they advocate for is not using single-use plastic bags and other items, so I intend to have a discussion with DBA as council's liaison on that particular issue and get their feedback. I also attended the community meeting on the day the first, it was put on by the Citizens for a Better Grand Forks. Job very, very well done, very well attended. Unfortunately, there were some in the audience that chose not to stay for the full event, and that was unfortunate. I did attend a presentation by Graham Watt and Diane Heinrich to the Downtown Business Association on May 2nd. This was in regard to the Dyke project grant application that had been turned down. They did a really excellent job and answered questions, council, some of us were there, and fielded questions as well. And finally, it is my understanding that our local medical community, in particular, our doctors, my doctor in particular, was rather surprised that there's no communications between them and city council, and yet, we put forward a resolution with respect to detox and rehab facilities, although I worked with Suzanne Lee, but with no input from the medical community. And so, I am trying to work with Dr. Simperick and Svetlana Balalana to have a meeting with their group. They meet Tuesday mornings from 8:30 until 10:00, and to have as many members of council as possible to attend that meeting as well, provided that the medical community agrees to hosting us, it would be probably in the hospital boardroom, because if we want to advocate for our services, our medical services in our city, we need to know what we need to advocate for, and it's all well and good just to make a determination that this is what we want to meet with the minister, or we want to meet with the IHA, but we need to know what they want us to advocate for, and to assist us in that regard. My original motion was that it would be with respect to the detox and rehab facilities, to be funded by the Ministry of Medical Health and Addictions. Well, I had the opportunity to speak to Minister Darcy when she was in town, and she advised me, they don't fund that. That is funded by the Ministry of Health through the IHA, Do Your Health Authority, who in turn funds some of that, but we don't know how many, and we don't know where they're located. So, this is why I think it's really important, and I would really hope that if I'm successful in achieving this meeting, that all of council will be able to participate and meet with the doctors and others that may be at that meeting. And that is my report.
Thank you, Counsel, and you'll let us know in advance?
Absolutely. As soon as I know, you'll know.
Okay, perfect. Counselor Zelinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank all the public and all the people that put on the May 1st community meeting. I think it's a good start, and thank you, Mayor, for representing us at the head there. What I'd like to talk about, though, is I received a few letters about our Parks Access Bylaw, and thus, I would like to put forward a motion, if need be, that we bring back that Park Access Bylaw for further discussion at a later meeting.
Whenever they can get it in front of us again. Okay, and the concerns being Massey Park?
Yes.
In particular, that's the one that's catching fire?
Yeah, and just a discussion on whether it should be included, whether or not we have to find a different park, how the motor site fits into it, and where we go there.
Okay. Diane, you know?
Since, Mr. Mayor, we're going to bring it back at the next committee of the whole meeting as a discussion item?
Well, that probably would be a good first one.
Okay, why don't you make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion at the next committee of the whole, that the Parks Access Bylaw, whatever the title is, comes back for discussion.
Seconded for that, Counsel Korlick. Further discussion on that? I mean, we passed it knowing we had to get some rules out there, but we knew it was imperfect, so I think it's reasonable that we reconsider some aspects of it, Counselor Moslin.
Just a question, for clarification, then, Mayor, what we did pass is in effect now?
Yes.
So, if we go back and go start the process?
It would be an amendment.
It would be an amendment, but while we're making up the amendment and going through that, the existing bylaw still is in effect.
That's the way I understand it, we did give it forth reading?
We're not in the limbo, we have something in place, it's just...
Right, yeah, so we got our thumb in the dab.
So, we'd like to work further on that, and we'll do it at the next committee of the whole. Thank you. Further on that?
Nope, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, and further council reports? Hearing none. Can I accept the council reports with a motion?
Excuse me, is there a motion made by Counselor Zelinski, is called for grabs?
I thought we voted on...
I said we have a second or a...
Yes, on the electric vehicle policy.
We're moving on to that one now.
Okay.
So, this is the bring it back to the next committee of the whole, and did we not vote on that?
No, I believe we had a second, but I didn't see it.
Okay, how many in favor of that? All right, thank you. And hearing no further council reports, receiving council reports, we had motion, Counselor Zelinski, Counselor Thompson, all those in favor, and Counselor Zelinski on the issue of electric vehicle charging policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't know how much more I need to add than what I mentioned before, but we're obviously got two chargers out there, and we're expecting maybe more, and just some idea through policy where we think we're headed with it, whether it's a public service, or whether it's a more proficient entity, or just how we're going to move forward.
And I would like to add that it was a topic of discussion for the mayors of Highway 3, and a lot of information came out in terms of what other communities are doing with this, so I think we can update what we're looking at here in terms of our own policy, but it's a hot topic throughout the electric highway. They're beginning to nickname the Highway 3 as the Electric Highway.
So, unless there's anything else, Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we direct staff to work on our electric vehicle policy.
And the second for that? Counselor Korlick, all those in favor. Carried. And the regional district, I have other items that I had for regional district. The BCDC has identified cannabis as the best economic opportunity that our community has at this point, and will be putting effort into that at the BCDC level. We're going to deal with the expansion of organic diversion later on as a late item. There are some capital cost implications, that was what Counselor Zelinski was asking me about. The Red Cross Program, we dealt with this at the meeting of the DBA. People are not happy with that, and I want council to know that I am, along with Rowley and Jennifer, really pressing the government in terms of how this has been laid out, and that we're not happy so far with the way things are going. There's been a lot of businesses that have been offered far less than the 18-5, and there are complications to how this is rolled out, so just to let you know that I will be speaking on basis behalf of council, that we're not, as a community, happy with how it's going. The other item is the community center, and again, here, we're being asked to prepare ourselves for the fact that as we move forward with this, that we are going to end up having to do the financial plan for it. So, one of the things that is being introduced for discussion at this point is a development corporation between myself as the city and Rowley as the regional district, and we need to look at that relationship with Rowley, and look at whether or not there's a corporate structure that could be put in place there that will make these kinds of things work better. So, I think economic development is the wrong tag for it, it's a corporate structure, but done in various other communities in order to make the money flow work as smoothly as possible. So, now that we have this relationship with the regional district, we need to look at how we can best make that functional. So, one of the things would be to look at what other communities have done with a corporate structure as the in-between, and that's all the detail I have, because it's very early in discussions on that. Any comment on that? Does anybody have any negatives on it?
Well, Director Russell, you know, I did bring up something along those lines, the AKBLG, he was pretty clear that, you know, any attempt to merge Area D and Area, and the city, was sort of off the table, because it would be very unpopular in Area D. That's not, I don't, maybe he was just thinking one example. Like, you're talking a corporate structure?
Yeah, I'm not talking district municipality here. No, we're just talking... Well, you brought up the district municipality thing.
I really think something needs to be looked at, Mayor, because we're talking, we had that workshop this afternoon on economic development, and it was all going to build on some sort of informal relationship that's good right now between Area D and the city. Now, I've been on council when there wasn't a good relationship between Area D and the city. I think several of us sitting here have been through that, and I agree, we need to somehow formalize that relationship. I don't care what you want to call it, a corporate structure or something, but we do have to think about, you know, we can't leave, we're going to build on this, okay, but it's working based on personalities right now, it's not an institutional thing.
No, and let's not build structures on personalities, we need good organizational structures. Counselor Thompson?
But what I heard you say was that this is just in discussion?
Yes.
There's been nothing formalized, probably just, I don't know, it was in passing meeting, Rowley had a chat about maybe even look at this, I don't know.
Actually, Rowley and I and Jennifer Wetmore are talking about it, and Rowley is open to the exploration of this as a better vehicle to fund things like the community center.
Yeah, exactly, so that things will, it would be coming back to council.
Yes, absolutely, I just don't want you blindsided with that discussion. We are looking at a way of managing how we share expenses for a number of things, and the community center is the first one coming up.
And the rest ones.
Yeah, okay, all right. Is that it? That's it for me tonight. Further questions on the regional district? Hearing none. A motion to accept the regional district report, Counselor Krogg, seconded by Counselor Zelinski, Okay, and the next one is summer event liquor permit requests. In this case, we have two events here that are basically exceeding the numbers that we had set in our policy that assigned that responsibility to staff. We have two special occasion licenses here. One is for the car show, and the other is for the... Yeah, the party, the street party. Would someone like to make the number one?
What's our one motion?
Nope, there's two.
I see two here.
We split it up on the...
Okay, I'm just looking at the recommendation here.
Okay.
We split it up as two for the overall agenda.
So, the number one resolution in the list, Counselor Korlick, seconded, Counselor Moslin, discussion on that? All those in favor? Carried. And the second one, this is the DBA Market Avenue as a, is this part of the car show too?
No, it's different dates.
This is the...
Different date, okay, yeah, July 20th, okay.
Parking on Market, or whatever the, yeah.
And can I hear that motion, Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Korlick? Discussion? All those in favor? Carried. The next item is the temporary use permit for a parking lot for cannabis on the 68th Avenue location, and in this case, as we discussed this morning, a temporary use permit is being worked on, and so this would be, the details of it would be forthcoming. Counselor Thompson makes the motion. Counselor Korlick, further discussion? All those in favor? Carried.
I just want to say, if I could, that I am really impressed with how the camper, camping ground, and the parking, and the event itself are being managed by the camp fest. You know, my understanding is that when they leave the park, it's probably left, and there's not much of anything for our employees to do, and I'm going to assume that there's going to be very few, if any, complaints from the campers or the parking lot because of the security that's provided, and I just wanted to express my own personal appreciation for a well-running event.
And hiring quite a few local people, which is very interesting. Okay, it's on the floor. We did already. And moving down then to bylaws, and the first is our CFO, and this is a quarterly report. Wish to go ahead with that, do you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this being the first quarter of the year, there's not really a whole lot to comment on, because we don't work on, you know, monthly accrual basis, some of the, you know, a lot of the revenues and expenses actually aren't in the financials for the year yet. Tax, the tax revenues will show up in the next quarter, once we bill, once we send out the tax notices. So, also, with the water billing, we, the new rates came into effect for February 15th, so they won't actually show up until the April billing, so that will be in the following quarter, and of course, the solid waste bylaw is in fact for May 1st, so the billing will be reflected in June.
Increase costs there?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to accept a quarterly report? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Korlick, further discussion? Thank you very much for that report. All those in favor? And moving down to bylaws, we have the 2019 Tax Rate Bylaw, and this is for a final reading of this bylaw. Do you wish to say anything on this matter? Not really, okay. We have discussed it, Counselor Thompson.
I'll move that, see, give it a final read.
And a second for that? Counselor Korlick?
Quick question.
Yes.
So, if I read this right, we're going to charge $1 for a blank parcel? If a vacant parcel has a minimum charge of $1 on it? Is that what I read?
I'm not sure.
That's just a minimum amount, nominal amount that's in there, and I doubt whether it's ever actually put into practice, so...
It just keeps track of those in there.
Yeah, it's just a minimum amount that we've charged, we've put it on.
Okay, I'm just, you're okay, thanks.
Ready for the vote on this, the final reading of our tax rate bylaw? All those in favor? opposed? Carried. Thank you. The next item is the proposed subdivision rezoning in consideration of the expansion of the Hutton School parking lot, and again, in this matter, we are being asked to give a third reading to this amendment. Am I correct? Yes. This is third reading to the amendment in question? Counselor Moslin?
Okay, your worship, we did have a public hearing on this zoning amendment just prior to this meeting. Do we need a... to this meeting. Do we need a fourth? Do we need, after a third reading, are we going to need a fourth reading?
Yes.
Can we do a third and a fourth tonight?
Len?
Mr. Mayor, this has to go to Mr. Transportation for sign-off after third reading, so we have to wait for the sign-off.
MOT? Okay, so this is third reading, so that we can go on with the process. MOT? Did we get the motion on the floor here? Councilor Thompson, I think we made the motion seconded, Councilor Corlick. All those in favor? Carried.
I'm glad we don't record names on our minutes.
Okay, we have two late items here. You have some paperwork on it. And late item number A is the Red Cross application. And so we actually supported this before, but it went back to the regional district, and we weren't specific enough. We, I think we supported it in principle, but we actually have to make that application for eighty-five thousand dollars for the housing now, which puts that position in place that works with our building bylaw enforcement in trying to bring some of these houses on stream as quickly as we can with assistance of a technical person.
Well, I would move that we rescind Resolution R one forty-seven dash slash nineteen slash oh four slash twenty-three.
Okay. A motion to rescind, seconder for that, Councilor Zelinski. Question? All those in favor? Councilor Mazlin, you had a question?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, the motion to rescind the previous motion, is that what?
Yeah.
Okay, I see. I do have a, well, we get to the main motion here, worship.
Okay, so all those in favor? This is the rescinding motion, and now we're on to making the motion, Council Direct Staff to submit an application. Councilor Zelinski making the motion, seconded by Councilor Studling. And discussion, Councilor Mazlin?
Okay, what's the contractor supposed to do? Is somebody who's wearing a belt and actually waiting in with the tools, or is he somebody who's standing up and saying, you know, that house has got to come down, move it now, or, I mean, what is actually, how is this contractor going to support residents of flood repair and remodels?
Okay, is this a hammer in the belt, or is this someone who's consulting and helping?
Bringing expertise.
Bringing other expertise to it?
That's...
Does anyone have a clearer picture of what this position might do?
Mr. Mayor, I just verified with Mr. Watt earlier today regarding if the funds are coming, for sure the city doesn't have to put any funds in that avenue.
Right.
That the person is going to work with Mr. Bruce, so I would guess it's in conjunction with his, so the city is only really giving some admin time and some of Mr. Bruce's time regarding building inspection and...
Yes, so...
And that's the information I have.
Okay, and, you know, our building inspector doesn't put his belt on and hammer nails either, so I think it's a coworker for him in looking at ways that we can move forward with these renovations as quickly as possible. Counselor?
Yes, and I echo Councilor Mazlin's concern whether or not we can put word in there just to clarify that the contractor itself is not the guy with the hammer and the nails to pick someone's house, that it's expertise, administrative expertise, and not physical...
A consultant.
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah, just something to clear it up.
To hire a consultant.
Yeah, I think that's clear, consultant.
That's the addition of a word in here?
No, no, I would want to be careful, because this is regarding a grant application, so this was given to me as is, because it's supposed to be for granted. That's why we couldn't use the previous resolution. It needed to be more specific, but again, I don't know where the specifics are, but...
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, is when I hired a contractor to help me with flood repair, they did flooring, and they did the work. They didn't say, hey, you should hire someone to do the flooring. It's they did the flooring, so just to distinguish between the two is...
Right. Councilor Thompson?
Well, I hear what both Councilors Zelinski and Mazlin are saying, but a consultant would be under contract. So they would be a contractor. And I think if the council has the understanding from our management that it is not, you know, hammer and nails, but to consult, it's just, it's terminology, and I would not want to change that terminology.
And plus, we're applying for a grant, so, you know, I could certainly come back with more details on the role that this person would play.
I might take a stab at reworking it a bit. On the Housing Now project to enable the city to hire a contractor to consult with residents on flood repair and build assistance.
I want consult rather than support?
Yeah, I think it'd be to...
About to consult and support.
Oh, let's go for both. All right, the mover and seconder on this matter, are they willing to add that word? So to support and...
To consult and support.
Consult and support. Yes, you are, Councilor Corlick. That's a motion on the floor as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, well, let's hope we get that, because we can use all the help we can get, you are.
Yeah.
And the second item B has to do with Council Direct Staff to send a letter of support to the R D K B committing in principle to supply of biosolids to the upgraded organic composting facility, subject to further discussion on how this program will function. Pretty wide open here, but, you know, we've gotten to a point where we've had the Cadillac organic diversion, although I've been saying, you know, really for our community, we should be taking in all of the commercial operations, the restaurants and stores, that we're really serious about this, but the rest of the region is trying to catch up to us and are saying, how come Grand Forks has this? And it's because we put out Valmar as an example of an experimental project, and it took off from there. It was so popular. So this is basically saying to go ahead to the regional district to look at some of these other things that will give us more capacity to deal with the biosolids or to organic diversion. And can I have a motion for this? Councilor Corlick? Councilor Studling? Further discussion? It looks like they need a machine that eats it, and so what they're doing now is kind of an open-air approach, and so what you'll be seeing will be, I think, an approach to it that will involve some capital investment.
Are we talking bio digester, something?
Yes, a digester.
Oh, okay.
So that's what they're looking at, I believe. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What they're looking at doing is producing a Class A compost. Right now, the compost that they produce is a, it can only go in landfill, pretty much cap landfills, so it's going to be diverting, it's going to be, because right now, the stream includes, I think it's like diapers and everything, and they're going to be looking at producing a better quality of compost material that actually can be used by the city or by others, and so it is a diversion of, it's getting a higher quality compost. And at the moment, we do have in our cap plan for a biosolids land application plan, and so this is kind of timely for us, because if the regional district does get their composting, and their composting doesn't, it doesn't always accept biosolids, but what they're doing is seeing, you know, with this grant, if they could accept biosolids as well and compost our biosolids, then we don't have to necessarily move forward looking at a land application plan, because we would be doing it this way instead. So it's just working together with the regional district with their biosolids and with our, and diversion of our, you know, materials for a higher quality of compost that can be used elsewhere.
Great, so there may be some revenue potential from it in...
Potential, yes.
From the compost. All right, so on the floor, further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. So I just wanted to add one more thing here that happened, and Sharon Perron, who was here, or didn't appear this afternoon, this morning, at the committee of the whole, I expected she might be here, and I'm just speaking on her behalf to clarify that the wilding project is a grassroots movement of teachers and believers in this as an educational approach, and so the regional district has kicked in funding support. And in fact, we were looking at it in a way that it's still going to work, but I think we need to be more sympathetic towards the project than we were. We were cutting it up pretty tight.
Sharon did come in and speak to me after school, and yeah, so she, there were some things that I didn't even know. I thought she'd have her presentation, so she does have a bunch of support. She's applied for grant funding, she's got support, she's got local materials being donated.
Yeah.
And she's still looking for other contractors and other businesses in the community to support the project. So we're going to go forward with the process for an application for a water service, and then when we bring that forward, the next, we'll bring it forward at the next meeting, and she will bring some information about all the funding sources and the work that they've done up to this point, and, you know, what she's done and how hard they've worked to get to what they have, and, yeah, so she'll be back.
And our decision from, our recommendations from this morning still stand. We want a more formal process, and we want to negotiate the cost, so that still holds, but I'm, I guess I'm impressed with the fact that it's such a grassroots kind of movement to bring a different form of education into the school.
Yeah.
Councilor Krog, and then Councilor Mazlin?
Okay, just, I aired that concern this morning, that if we invest in it and put it out there and it never gets used, because it was a grassroots, you see how long it's taken, the Learning Garden to start?
Yeah, I bet.
Right, but it's going, so this may be awesome, and waiving the fees for the water they use is great, but if we invest and it doesn't get used, then the citizens pay money for...
Councilor Mazlin?
I just hope that when Ms. Perron shows up, that she brings with her a letter from her principal and a letter from the superintendent indicating school district support for this project, because otherwise, as Councilor Krog has pointed out, we're hanging on personalities here.
Yeah.
How long is, how long is that teacher going to teach? Forever? What could happen to a wilding project when there's a change in staff? Is, in other words, is it a school district commitment? In which case, I'm more than willing to support it.
Okay, so we support it in principle. I think what we're saying now is that we need to take a look at this in terms of how it's supported by the school district, and I think that our decision was a good one this morning. That's all I have on that matter, not bringing any motions forward. Anything further from the gallery? Alex? No? Okay, motion to adjourn.